Good evening and welcome to the Town of Acton Selectments Meeting for October 22, 2015. First item on the agenda, a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Approval of the minutes of the last meeting?
I move that we approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Okay. Department head, committee chair, updates.
Packet's for you, just one second. Pass that down, please.
I think it's a whole package for each of us. Is Ken gonna be here to talk about this?
Nope, I'm gonna talk about it for him.
Okay.
He's got a line out the door down there, and the way I understood it, and the library may be different, is that it was okay for them to bring these things to me and I would present it, but if certainly if you want to change that, we can talk about it. Alright, so the first thing on my list is the boat purchased, if you recall at town meeting, they appropriated, was it eighty-six hundred dollars, I think, for a boat? That was approved by town meeting. Ken has been looking for a boat, and he believes he's found one that he'd like to purchase. The spreadsheet that you have in front of you has, looks like ten, twelve different boats, they're all the same brand as far as the center console, they're similar in length, similar in years, we've got the prices all listed there, location of where it is, and some additional notes on each boat. I do have the actual ads for each boat that's listed there, if somebody wants to take a look at them, but the recommendation and purchase that we're looking for is on the first one, the Logic Center Console, seventeen foot, two thousand. The asking price was eighty-five hundred, he was able to negotiate down to seventy-five, and it appears to be in extremely good shape, comes with a trailer, Ken's been over to look at it, he's had some people inspect it, and if you compare it to the other boats of the same year, make, model, length, all coming off a credits list, it's certainly a deal, it's actually, I think there's, well, there's one six thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollar one, but that one's fifteen feet.
Okay.
In addition, this one comes with the, obviously, the boat and the motor and the trailer, it comes with the fire extinguishers, seat cushions, life jackets, captain chairs, boat cover, some fish finders, and a variety of other things that we'll just leave out. But, so we're looking for approval to spend the money that the townspeople allocated on this particular boat.
Okay, I don't know much about boats, so did he have the engine checked, or?
He listened to it run.
He listened to it run, should we have that checked? I don't know.
Is this an inboard, or?
It's an outboard.
Outboard.
It's an outboard?
I think that, I mean, most of these sales are gonna be as-is, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, but as-is, but do we want to spend seventy-five hundred dollars if we don't?
Right, but then how much, right, how much is it gonna cost to have it fixed? I mean, his line is already tight, he's gotta register it.
How's that work? Do we have to pay excise tax?
He said it's only two hundred and seventy-five hours on the engine, if you note.
Yeah.
So it's extremely low.
That's, yeah, that's not bad.
And this is, um, this is a one-owner as well.
Okay. How's it work with registration? Do we have to pay excise tax and everything?
No, the town can be exempt from excise tax, but you will, they will pay the registration fee, the mill foil fee, anything that goes to the state, the town is not exempt from.
Okay.
I think as long as he's looked at it and he's satisfied with it, two hundred and seventy-five hours is not many hours for an engine even on a boat.
Fifteen years old.
Yeah. But I think in that price range, that's where you're gonna be.
Must be fiberglass, right?
Yes.
I would think, yeah.
So fifteen years isn't gonna affect a fiberglass boat and the engines.
What is the engine?
Seventy horsepower Suzuki four-stroke engine.
Is that two thousand and two? Good stuff?
If you've got a four-stroke with seventy-five hundred bucks, it's what you did.
Okay.
Alright, I don't know, I'd say if that's the one he's looked at and he likes, then we go with it.
Make a motion?
Put that in, I'll put that in a motion, that we approve the purchase of the Logic Center Console Boat, seventeen foot, two thousand, for seventy-five hundred dollars.
Sure.
All in favor?
Okay. If I could just pass through down an actual bill of sale because it is town property, if you can have Ted, if you can sign and date that, please.
Oh, so, oh, there's two people that own it?
Two brothers own it, so they want the money split half and half.
And three, or is it?
Nope, so it's fine. Alright.
So that means I get to keep it at my house?
Why don't you sign beside it, and let's get a second one just to be sure. No?
Since I signed it, that means I keep it at my house, no?
No.
That's right.
All he wants to do is.
No, he wanted you to just sign beside him, even though there's no line, just pretend there's one.
Oh, okay.
There you go.
Pretend there's one.
Okay, while he's signing, moving on to the next item, siding work, just wanted to give you an update, that Ken expects to start his siding project on Monday, he has found his yearly temporary help employee that will be a Town of Acton employee temporarily based on the personnel policy, he's come in and filled out all the required paperwork, it is someone different.
Oh, okay.
And he's recommending eighteen dollars an hour, which is a little cheaper than we had budgeted for, so.
Yeah, yeah.
But he expects to start on Monday, so you should see that, and for a while, we're gonna be routing traffic in through the side door.
Over here.
So, pay attention and look for that.
Alright, so he's gonna do, we figured we had enough for the two inside walls, and then he'll decide whether there's enough to go further?
Right, the two inside and the facing the door.
Yeah, well, he already did the door part last year.
Right, but the sides coming into it.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Down, right down the alleyway, okay.
Yeah, and then, I mean, we've been very clear that, you know, when he gets even close to that number, we'll decide if we're going towards the library or not. Next item on the agenda, the memo from Attorney Moran regarding the fire and rescue ordinance. At the last meeting, you guys read his change, you read his suggested changes, Mr. Cantanzi made some recommended changes based on the attorney's letter, you guys had a meeting on Monday, and they sent me a final draft, so, the letter from Mr. Moran says, Jennifer, I reviewed the version of the Acton ordinance revised on October twentieth, the new version incorporates all the changes that I recommended in my October fifteenth letter, I see no problems with the current version. So, he is fine with it, and I have attached it, if you can just flip through, I just wanna make sure the board is, knows exactly what, I don't think there were any other changes after the meeting, right?
Right.
Right, okay. So if we were looking at the ordinance on page, it was highlighted, it looks like Article seven, the appointment of officers, because it's black and white, you can barely see the highlighting.
Mm-hmm.
But that was the change, that the two deputy chiefs, one year each, recommended by the selectmen for appointment by the seven-member commission, and then seven point one five was changed, member of the public to be selected by the six other members of the commission. Seven-three had the change to incorporate the word of the commission, and I think that was pretty much it, they were minor changes, correct?
Yes.
I thought there was a change in six, but I guess, well, so that's it.
Okay.
So, with the board's okay, the committee is happy with it, the attorney's happy with it, with the board's okay, we're gonna move forward and start getting ready for this special town meeting.
Okay, and the Warren Finance already has this version?
Warren Finance has this version, yes, they're hoping, they're going to, and I'll, after the board actually votes on and accepts this version tonight, I'll send the chair an email tomorrow letting her know this is the final draft to vote on, because they were waiting essentially to make sure that you were okay with the changes.
Okay, so we're gonna vote before the Warren Finance does?
Yes.
Okay.
So, you guys are all okay with this?
Yeah.
As presented, okay. Yes, I went ahead and put the recommendations on the November tenth warrant on the agenda because the thought behind that is the Warren Finance is gonna meet on Monday, and they're gonna get us our recommendations, we're gonna have to get them typed in here, if I have to in the same meeting have you make all your recommendations, leave the room to type them in, and then bring it back for you to sign it, you know, it's, so, I'm not gonna read them all, I'm just gonna read the actual question, and you guys can make your motions, and we'll have that in there, so. So, "In the name of the State of Maine, you hereby requested to notify and warn the inhabitants of said Town of Acton qualified to vote in town affairs to assemble at the Acton Elementary School on November tenth at six o'clock in the evening." So Article two, shall the Town of Acton zoning ordinance be amended to retain in the ordinance only the version, following version of section four point two-two-six, special exceptions, and to repeal all other versions? Now, this is your selectman's version. So if Article two passes, Article three does not require a vote, if Article two fails, Article three is adopted as written. So we're looking for a motion from the board.
Make a motion, we approve as read.
Prove the article as written?
Yes.
Sure.
All in favor?
Article three, shall the Town of Acton zoning ordinance be amended to retain only the following version of the four point two-two-six and repeal all others? This is the planning board version. I will tell you, we do have a, and let me just go back, the Warren Finance, they had a recommendation on the other one already, it said Article two be tabled, meaning to set aside.
Mm-hmm.
On this one, they've recommended Article three ought not to pass. It's the planning board version, so, what would you like?
Okay, but we have a legal description on the tabling, which means they're voting it down, which means the next one comes into effect anyways, correct?
Right, there, and I, I sent that recommendation, the way that it was written, over to the attorney and said, you know, even after everything you said, this is what we got back, he said that that was the way they wrote it, because even the description of, you know, feeling like they needed to say, meaning to set aside, you know, not sure, he didn't think that was necessary, but he said if that was their verbiage, just to put it in there, it was just a recommendation, so.
Okay. So we need a motion on the planning board's version?
Article three.
Make a motion, we approve, the planning boards disapprove.
Sure.
Wait, wait, wait.
Approve or disapprove?
Go back to this again.
Okay. Warren Finance's recommendation was Article three ought not to pass. If you, I mean, you can support them both, that's certainly your choice.
Right.
But they're not both, I mean, one of them's gonna come out, one of them has to come out, based on the way you voted.
Right, okay, yep.
So you are saying that you want to approve two as written, which means you want to keep the one in there with the resource protection, the way that you guys submitted it originally.
Yeah, keep ours and, so ought not, allow the other one not not to pass.
So the motion is for Article three ought not to pass?
Yes.
Bill?
Uh, sure.
All in favor?
Article four, shall the following, Town of Acton zoning ordinance be amended as follows? Again, I'm not gonna read it, there's been no changes to this, this is the historical structure that you guys agreed on a few weeks back, so looking for a motion?
Make a motion, we approve as written.
Sure.
All in favor?
Article six, shall the Town of Acton adopt a solid waste ordinance as amended below? Again, no changes since your last meeting.
Make a motion, we approve as written.
Sure.
All in favor? Alright, we have a warrant.
Well, we got one more.
One more.
Well, we didn't actually vote on, so, shall the Town of Acton vote to adopt the Acton Fire and Rescue Ordinance as presented this evening? Technically, there are.
I'll approve, uh, make a motion, we approve as written.
Sure.
All in favor?
Thank you. The next item is a memo from the treasurer regarding animal control. So each month, the animal control officer gives you a very detailed list, which I don't believe you've seen in the past, of every call that he goes to. In the past, we've had just total amount of miles, and we've paid that, but I've had him do exactly, you know, where he's going, where he started, and where he went, so that you can see the types of calls, so dogs, cats, cows, whatever. Apparently, according to Michelle, he's answering too many calls.
(laughing)
Because, Jennifer, as we discussed, I expect a shortfall in the ACO mileage line. Budgeted for the year was six fifty, with the monthly mileage averaging at a hundred and twenty for call responding, I expect a shortfall somewhere around nine hundred dollars. Current balance in the account is sixty-nine seventeen. Without going to town meeting to increase the appropriation, the board can use its contingency fund, which is a miscellaneous account in general government, which is the same line that that's paid out of, to cover it if they so wish, currently there is fifteen hundred and thirty dollars. Another thing that you can do is take some of the money out of the town dog fees. It says, however, we budgeted a thousand dollars to offset taxes last year, and we only took in, I believe that should only be six hundred, because she's saying that we didn't-
Oh, so we didn't get the thousand?
Right, so there isn't a lot of extra funds in there, so, you know, I mean, you could, you could, you've got three options, you can tell him to stop answering so many calls, and, you know, try to pick and choose more if you'd like, but I assure you, he'll be giving out your phone numbers if you decide to go with that option. You can take half out of each one of those lines, take it all out of one, or you can let it just run negative, and let the townspeople deal with it in June.
I think we should take it out of the miscellaneous expenses line, 'cause we're not sure we're gonna go up to that, she's just basing that-
On the prior year.
-shortfall of nine hundred dollars based on what he's doing right now, wintertime, I'm sure he's probably not gonna have the same amount of calls, right?
I, it's-
From experience, you know?
It amazes me, the calls that come in.
Really?
And the hours they come in.
(laughing) That's right, they're calling your house, aren't they? Uh, okay.
They're calling his cellphone.
Yeah, um, so, I think we should use miscellaneous expenses.
Yeah, I think it makes the most sense.
Yep.
So, get that in a motion, authorize the treasurer to expend out of that account for animal control mileage?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we go up to, it's gonna be, what, nine hundred is the?
Well, that's the estimate, I mean, like Ted said, hopefully in the winter, it'll slow down some, but what makes it difficult in this is that a lot of times, the animal's not found the first time, so unfortunately, and the vet is a great resource, that they call often about animals, you know, a dog that they see up there, so by the time he gets all the way up there, the dog's gone, and he drives around, he drives around, he drives around, goes back home, an hour later, they saw the dog again.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we pull out of the miscellaneous expense column as needed. As needed.
Sure.
All in favor?
Alright, next document you have is an estimate from Sanford Flooring, the library came to me a couple of weeks ago and showed me the vinyl that's at the entranceway of their library, I don't know if any of you have visited lately, but it's starting to lift up, and they're afraid that it might be a hazard for people walking and tripping over it, so Sanford Flooring came out and gave them an estimate of three hundred and seventy-five dollars and fourteen cents. What's important to note is the last line here, a screen door will need to be trimmed down because it will rub on the new floor, this will not be done by Sanford Flooring, so if it's something you decide to move forward with, we need to have handyman. What is your direction?
Where do we have the funds available for this?
Building maintenance.
Not with the siding.
Well, there'll be, I mean, there's some in there.
And the other things that we have come out, but it's the library, it's not the town.
Yeah, no, I, I'm-
You know?
He asked the question, I was just trying to-
Yeah, no, and I'm just saying how I think, what I think about it, I mean, we've given them money for the year, we're gonna side their building, we put a new roof on the building, we put a new floor on the building, we have to wait and see where we get with the siding this year before we know we have a maintenance, because we also have salaries and everything else going on the maintenance, so I say we wait on this until we see where we're at after the siding's done.
Siding should be, what, another, about a month?
Yeah.
You know, we own the building, correct?
We own the building.
Their tenants have hours in the building. Who handles the insurance on the building?
They do.
You do?
We do. No, they do.
The insurance?
Yeah, they buy their own insurance.
It's covered, well, the-
We insure the building, but they have their own liability and everything else.
Alright, for their, for their people, yes, but no, the building is the town's.
They run their business based on the money that we give them out of the town budget every year.
Yeah, no, I think it needs to be done, but I think we should wait and see how we make out with the siding and-
Do you want to, I guess I would encourage you to take a look at it and figure out if you can work with them to find out something temporarily, because the last thing you want to happen is the fact that we've decided not to move forward with it at this point and somebody fall, it's, it is lifting in quite a few spots, I don't know if maybe a staple gun, if you can just go through and tack it.
I'll stop in and see what can be done.
Okay, so I'll tell them to come back before you, when the siding is complete, or put it in their budget next year.
I'd say come back and see us.
After the siding?
Yep.
Ted?
I agree.
Okay. Bill, do you wanna add anything?
Sure.
Yeah, 'cause last year, maintenance, out of maintenance fee, we had to have an electrician in to fix their lights, we had to have the heating guy in to fix the heater.
No, and I, I mean, I hear what you're saying, and I agree with you, I mean, I guess the only thing is maybe you need to, you know, and I'm gonna, you know, take bullets for this, but I mean, maybe you need to consider rent, if you're, you know, I mean, if we're gonna own the building, it's our job to maintain it, so if they're not putting in all that, maybe, you know-
Yeah, but the rent-
-you need to charge them rent to cover these things.
It's kinda hard to charge rent when we give them the eighteen thousand dollars that they run off from the town already, so we just-
As a-
If we're gonna charge them rent, then we're just gonna lower it.
They don't get any funds from anybody else?
Well, this, they, I imagine they do fundraisers and grants and stuff, I'm not sure, but most of their budget comes from the town.
Right, but when municipal looks at it and everything, 'cause remember, when we went through some of those things, and the, the covers weren't on the outlets and stuff, I mean, they went through the library, and that, I mean, that building is as much your responsibility.
Oh, for the insurance company, yeah, you're right.
Uh, next on the item, next on the agenda is cemetery update, I just wanted to take a minute, I know we've spoken the last couple of weeks, so we skipped last week, but we've been talking about the cemetery updates, and that we're basically starting from scratch, trying to get information on the cemeteries, we just don't, the committee, conservation committee hasn't been able to locate anything, we talked this summer about the legal standings that we have, that we're bound to, you know, maintain these veterans' graves by state law, we appropriated the money at town meeting to do it, but nobody knows where the cemeteries are. Everybody thought the conservation knew, and it's just been an ongoing, so we're basically starting from scratch, we're advertising, we're putting things out there, and I just wanted to take a minute to thank Dennis Long and his mother, who is now deceased, but Dennis came in probably a month ago and gave me a phenomenal packet of information on the graves of the Civil War veterans, of people that were buried, exactly where they're buried, you know, the dates, how they passed away, I mean, just, just a lot of really good information, so it's a good starting point, but again, anybody has information on a veteran, you have one on your property, next summer, we're gonna have to start maintaining them, and unfortunately, without a good built list over the winter, we're not gonna be, we're not gonna be able to get to them all, because we don't know where they are.
Well, I'd like to thank Dennis, and his mother was on the committee for many years, so appreciate it, getting that coming in.
And that's what, yeah, and he, when he heard the plea for it, he basically, he said that he went and, you know, tried to find this information and gathered it all up, that she would want that, so.
Just if I make a comment on that, Dave Langley here, my family owns a bunch of cemeteries, you know, all you gotta do is make some phone calls, Brian McGlinsey's done a lot of research for the McGlinsey family and the Horn family in north end of town, I'll be more than glad somebody contacts me to go up and walk the family cemeteries and all over the north end of town, so.
Well, what we need right now is to know where the veterans are, 'cause then we can spend money on them.
Yeah, well, probably-
If they're just private, if there's no veterans in the cemetery, then we can't spend the money on them.
Oh, I know that, but what I'm saying is, we don't, the new generation doesn't know where they are.
Yeah.
My great-great aunt knows where a lot of them are, can point us in the right direction, my family, the Reed family's done a lot of research on that for, from when the Horns and Langleys are all in the north end of town, so, there's a lot of resources, somebody just needs to ask.
Well, and that's, and that's exactly why we're having it at a public meeting, and we've, we're trying to put some information on slides, because, I mean, as much as I would love to be able to just sit down and start calling some of these, these older people that would love to have these conversations, this staff doesn't have the manpower to do that.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm just saying, is if they, if they need to know-
We're hoping that between these meetings-
You know, they're all, you know-
Well, anything you can get us, Dave, would be wonderful.
No, that's fine, but like I said, there's, there's numerous cemeteries up on our, on our property that we take, do have veterans in them and stuff, so.
If, yeah, but if you have somebody that has a package like this, this would be amazing, this would be a great help.
Or even jotting it down, you know?
So, I'll, I'll check on some stuff up, up home, and I can always drop something off to you.
Perfect, would be very much appreciated.
Thanks a lot, Dave, good, appreciate it.
Thank you. The next item that I have is something that came law on October fifteenth, and I thought that I would share it with you, may be the only way to eventually get the word around town. So the State of Maine has changed, legislature has changed the law on write-in votes. We know that at a state level, write-in votes are only accepted and only counted if the candidate is declared, you have to declare by a certain date, other than that, we don't even have to count them. From the municipal piece of it, we've always counted all write-ins, period, because that law didn't affect us. Well, effective October fifteenth, that has changed, so, you've got three options. So the first one, so first, a municipality may, by vote of its legislative body, at least ninety days before the next annual election, opt to require local write-in candidates to declare their candidacy by filing with a municipal clerk forty-five days before the election. So that's number one, we can go to town meeting and we can say, listen, we wanna, we wanna force people to declare their write-in candidacy and get them to, which, it's not a lot different than taking out nomination papers, because nomination papers are available eighty days before election, and this has got a forty-five day timeline, so, I'm not sure, from a personal standpoint, how, you know, how much difference that is, but, but we can force people to declare their write-in candidacy, which is what the state does. Second, in a municipality that does not opt to require write-in candidates to be declared, write-in votes must be counted only if there are no nominated candidates, or all nominated candidates have withdrawn by election day, or the number of write-in votes as determined by the machine count exceeds the candidate. So what this means is that if there is one name on the ballot, and we don't go to town meeting, and we don't ask them to change, to force the declares, how we're going forward is that we're saying, if there is a name on the ballot, and it's a one position, then you do not have to legally count write-ins, okay? If it's two positions and only one name is on the ballot, then we would still have to count the write-ins. That's really something to think about, because it's gonna make a difference, if there are no names on the ballot, then write-ins will always be counted, period. So, you know, something you may wanna give some thought, and we can bring up at the beginning of the, you know, before, when, before town meeting, just to see kind of what the voters wanna do with that, but the way that it stands now, we will not be counting write-ins unless the spots are blank. The last one, it just says, this isn't, it says it's new, but I think we've always treated it this way. Third, under no circumstance must any write-in vote be counted for a fictitious person, a deceased person, or a person who is a non-resident where the municipal residency is required. As far as I'm concerned, that's not new, I mean, it's not something we really would've ever counted, so, just a little FYI for that.
We just, are we updating the emergency, is no closure, or?
Well, with the upcoming season, I thought that it was important for you to review it as a board, I mean, a lot of these policies that, that take effect, just wanna make sure it's still what you wanna do, if you wanna make any changes, do you mind reading it?
Nope. Municipal offices and transfer station may be closed in the event of a weather or other public emergency. Every attempt will be made to service the townspeople of Acton while keeping the safety of our employees in mind. During extreme weather conditions, the office manager will consult with the road commissioners about road condition. The office manager will then decide whether to delay the opening or close town services. The board of selectmen, transfer station superintendent, and department heads will The board of selectmen, transfer station superintendent, and department heads will be notified immediately of the decision. Whenever possible, a decision will be made at least two hours before the scheduled opening of municipal services. Employees who are scheduled to work will not be, will be notified of any delay or closure by their immediate supervisor. Employees should direct questions or concerns to their immediate supervisor. The office manager will make every attempt to notify the public of an emergency closer, closing via the town's website, local news, and cable television station, as well as updating the voicemail on the town's telephone system. The board recognizes depending on the emergency, all of these methods of notifying the public may not always be available. I think it's fine.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. The only thing that I do want to bring up regarding that, and it's not in the policy so much, but, um, is the staff pay. So the way that it stands now, and it's not in the, and actually, Bill, I gave you two personnel policies. Can I have one of them back, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
If they're here and go home, we pay them for the day. But if they're, if we call them and they don't come in, then we don't pay them. Is that correct?
Right. If, if, if they come in and we decide to close early, we pay them for the full day.
Right.
But if we call and close the town hall for the day, they do not get paid.
Right.
The storm is out of their control.
Right.
So I'm wondering if the, the board wants to reconsider that at all. Um, I did check with some surrounding towns and, and just so we're clear, as a salary employee, this does not affect me either way, so. If, most of the surrounding towns, if the town chooses to close, because it's that kind of a storm, they do get paid. They don't, because they don't want them to have the option of coming in. I mean, our employees don't have the option of coming in. We, you know, if we tell them we're closed, we're closed.
Right.
But, you know, we'll use Shapley for an example, because they have some elected positions. The board of selectmen can choose to close in Shapley. The town clerk who was elected, she can go in anyways. Do you know what I mean? And they try to avoid that. And, and one of the ways they do that is by, is by paying them. Um, besides, like I said, they, they feel like it's something that's out of the employees' hands.
Yeah. And we don't have that issue.
As far as?
Anybody that can decide to come in, if, if we decide to close, nobody can come in on their own, so everybody's out, everybody's out.
Well, the department heads, yeah, they should all take that advice. So you want to leave it the way it is? Is that what I'm getting? Hearing? Okay. All right. First item under Old Business is award the sand bid. David, come on up.
I, uh, went out today and I went down to Gormam Sand and Gravel. Got a test sampler, one of these here, little, uh, that's all ad available at the time, so. What I've got here is a sample from, this is, uh, they're calling the Midway Pit at the end of the H Road. That's the sand that I, I gave us the sample of. And this is the sand from the Gormam Sand and Gravel. Just, I figured it'd be a good idea. There was only two bids. I was in the area. And, uh, just to let you know, you know, what the differences are, not a whole lot. Um, I did-
Except for four dollars a yard, right?
Yeah, it is. Yeah, you're talking about five dollars a yard.
Five dollars a yard?
Five dollars a yard. And, um, so I figured just kicks and giggles, it would be a good idea to-
Yeah, we haven't done that for several years. We went on the bus tour, remember, and got baggies from every pit with Lorraine.
I hadn't seen the sand at all-
Yeah.
From up there on the other side of town there, up to the Midway Pit and the, uh, in Gormam Sand, I, I had a pretty good idea what was down there, so I just figured it'd be a good idea just to visually let you see what we're purchasing or not purchasing, so.
And they have the ability to deliver?
Uh, I talked to Charlie today from the Midway Pit and because it was, we have some issues right now with the salt sand building, the whole, everything going on down there. So, um, I called him up, asked him what, how, what the availability of the delivery is gonna be and this and that. And he told me that they were gonna be hauling in with trailer dumps. And the problem is we can't haul in with trailer dumps right now because, um, the access into the old shed. We're gonna have to put some material in the old shed just for the meantime until the other ones finish, just in case we do have an event before they're done. Um, so he, he did tell me there that, um, he could get tri-axles. And I, I asked him, you know, how fast, we, I, I explained to him that we typically take three and a half, three to three and a half days to put up our sand pile. And that we, we're pretty much, that's what we expect to do now. Um, because anytime that you go over that, it's more machine time, more of this, more labor. So it drives the cost of the sand up if we can't get it done. So even if it was at four, uh, say five forty a yard, which his price is, you know, you, there's a big difference between both of them. So I mean, it'd be hard to encroach the other price, but we don't want to start making that, that sand more expensive than it should be. And he told me there that they were gonna be able to bombard us with sand at will. So, uh, that's what he said. So I did explain to him that the first order would not be three thousand yards of sand, that it would be probably a few hundred yards to start off with and that, and he said, no problem.
Just in case we get a storm until we're ready to use a new building?
Yeah, we, we've got, um, roughly six, seven hundred yards down there right now and, um-
In the old shed?
In the old shed from last year, um, when we had it hauled in from FR Carroll. Um, the, I did order four loads of salt. Um, I got ahold of Janet today. She received the contract. We're all set. So I ordered four loads just to have on hand, just in case. You never know, you know, so, um, we don't want to get-
Put that in the old shed?
We're gonna put it in the old shed. Um, we're gonna try to limit what we put in there so we don't have to worry about this, you know, moving it back and forth. And we're trying to keep, um, the trucks and stuff out of there just because of the construction going on there. So we're gonna try to limit what we've got going on down there, so this is just a precautionary measure at this point. So, um, I talked to Scott today and, um, we both agree that we're gonna go with the Midway, uh, the Midway bid. And, um, we've never dealt with them before, so we're just gonna feel it out, see how it works out. Um, but at the cost, it's kind of hard not to.
Right.
Um, I do feel though that if we ever have any issues there, that Gormam Sand would be a very good alternative. Seeing, uh, last year, we ended up having to haul it out of, um, FR. I believe it was twelve, twelve fifty a yard, I believe is what we were paying delivered. And these guys here, if we can still get that, if we need to in an emergency case, nine something, it's still a better deal than what we were getting, so.
Did they have it already made up now? It's all stockpiled?
Yeah, oh, yeah. I went, I went down. They get all kinds of it.
Yeah.
And, um, and they're a big company, so I mean, if I call up and order a thousand yards, I'm gonna get a thousand yards.
Oh, they're not just here in Acton, they have other pits?
They're not here in Acton.
They're not here in Acton.
Gormam Sand is out of-
On sand.
I'm talking about Gormam Sand as an alternative if this doesn't work out.
But the one in Acton, though, they, they have theirs already?
They're, they've got a pile up right now, um, that, the sand that I just showed you, it's pretty good. Unfortunately, they were having to mix, they make concrete sand. That's what they do. Concrete sand, road sand's a little different. Um, it's still pretty gritty. It's decent. So, um, they told me they had to add material, make concrete sand, so it's finer. So I asked them, I said, well, can you, uh, we give you a couple of days ahead that they would screen the real granular stuff that we want. So it'd be a little better than what we, we've got here. And they said they would.
Okay.
So, um, other than that, um, uh, the shed, they've got all the, uh, I'll do an update on the shed. So we're all set with the sand. Scott and I decided that we're going to-
So your recommendation and Scott's recommendation is to give the bid to?
Spectrum Resources.
Spectrum Resources, okay. Can we have a bid on that?
Five forty delivered and four fifty picked up.
Five forty delivered?
Five fifty delivered.
Five forty delivered.
Five forty.
And four.
Then we need to update your notes from-
What notes?
The, uh, minutes of the last meeting.
Oh, you read them?
Yes, I did. Looking right at it here, it says five fifty per yard delivered from Spectrum Resources.
Well, I have the original that says five forty.
Okay, we'll go with the original.
All right. Five forty delivered and, and what was the pickup?
Four fifty.
Four fifty.
You got the notes? Yeah, four fifty.
Okay. So a motion?
I'll make a motion. We go with Spectrum, uh, Resources for a bid of four fifty per yard picked up or five forty per yard delivered. And we go with the delivered price. Bill?
You second it? All in favor?
David, can I just ask you, um, has Gormam Sand and Gravel been notified about the other bid? I mean, should I send them a Dear John letter or do they know that?
I'll, I'll call them tomorrow. Um-
Well, I mean, I can do it from the town, so it doesn't look so personal. Just have a board sign.
I talked to him today. I, I told him there was a huge, he already knew the price. I did tell him there was a large difference in the price. That's why I was down there.
So you'll take care of that?
And, um, the reason why I was getting the sand, because obviously we pay for quality, you know, and if, if the sand, and I hadn't looked at their sand yet, so I really wanted to make sure that, you know, um, I didn't get up there and get putty sand and then go, well, we're gonna have to go the other route. So, uh, he said either way, whatever happens, um, and, uh, like I said, I, he pretty much made it out that, you know, if we do need it, we can still get it for that, so.
So you'll take care of it, Walter?
So I'll, I'll take care of it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'll give a, I guess, a little update on the building. Um, they've got all-
It looks great.
Got the arches all up, the, um, um, strappings all up. It loo, looks like it's all prepped up for roofing. So, um, they're gonna be starting on the gable end walls here, so hopefully next week, um, after they get the structure sound that we can work underneath it, uh, we can get the final, final grading done because, uh, I have contacted Dayton Sand, trying to get some sort of schedule along, getting that page as soon as possible, so.
Yeah, it went by at four o'clock and the gable end towards the fire station's already done.
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, they said they were gonna be doing that, so, um, so it's, so from, from what I'm getting out of it, it sounds like they'll be starting to put up, uh, roofing next week, so. Okay?
Sounds great. Thanks a lot, Dave. Personnel policy?
Yep. Um, Ed actually asked me to put this on the agenda, I think, a couple of things from the Monday night meeting that he wanted to address.
Sure. And, uh, Bill Catanse can fill in here too if I should run a stray on this. Getting the fire rescue ordinance put together. The only part that we've, we had any real issues with, the left, and it's very easy to straighten out. The ordinance itself is fine the way it is, but we found there was a, a missing piece in the personnel policy. There really is nothing in the personnel policy that deals with the firefighters or the volunteer firefighters. So if you want to come up, Bill, and kind of fill in where I'm-
The town personnel.
The town personnel po, policy, not the fire department's personnel policy, because there is two different ones.
Basically, there is nothing in there to cover, uh, stipend workers. They would come under temporary workers and the town personnel policy says basically, two selectmen can get rid of a temporary worker for, you know, no real reason and there's no recourse to it. So basically, we'd like to get something in the town policy that protects our stipend workers a little better.
To read, to read it off exactly. I've got the policy in front of me. It's item D, um, under section, or article four. It states temporary employees. Temporary employees work on a non-permanent basis, usually within a limited timeframe. They are not entitled to benefits. The employee may be terminated for any reason and at any time by the board of selectmen. Didn't feel as though there was really any security in there.
What about the next one down, the per diem employees? Isn't that a stipend? I mean, wouldn't they, because that talks about fire and rescue.
We have per diem employees.
And separate from stipend employees?
Very separate. Per diem are the folks that are working now and getting paid by the town.
Okay. And the stipend ones are, just get stipends on calls?
Yeah.
So why don't we put together some drafts of a letter F, call it stipend employees, and work, you know, work on some text for that rather than-
That's what we felt needed to be done.
Because the temporary, you know, we certainly don't want to change because we have, you know.
Yep.
But we can make it stipend employees and just add another column.
That was the thought that we had was to-
Ted, are you okay with me drafting up some samples and looking at it next week with that?
Yeah, but we still have to leave in, you know, they're not eligible for benefits and, um, are you saying that you want them to be, as far as being terminated, you're asking for them to be covered by the same, um, policy that we have for employees of the town?
Uh, Fire Chief is here. I think he can address that better than me.
Okay. All right. That makes sense. We can do that easy.
Yeah, just to protect them.
Right, but as far-
Most of them have been here longer than any of us in the room.
But as far as benefits though, I mean, if they're gonna be working twenty something hours, we can't give them medical insurances and stuff like that. It would put your budget right out.
We're not looking at any of that. We're just looking to protect them from being, you know, fired without reason, I guess, is the thing that worries us.
Okay, and that makes sense.
So that second sentence, we'll just make it say a stipend employee is not considered a permanent employee and is not entitled to benefits, um.
I don't think we're gonna change any of that. We're gonna add another-
Well, no, that's what I'm saying, but I'm gonna, so I'm gonna take that line there.
Yeah, yeah, just, yeah, just take lots and pieces of some of those others and we'll-
I mean, the other ones, whether it be, um, you know, it can say something like, if you look at the full-time salaried, full-time hourly, I mean, you could say employees, referring to that line, being stipend and tell me if this is okay. Employees are subject to all personnel rules and regulations, um, as provided herein. So that will, that will mean that the stipend employees are gonna follow the discipline as spelled out in the back.
Well, which they should as employees.
Right, right. Is that what we're trying to get?
Yes.
All right. So I'll, um, draft something, let you guys look at it and see if the board will sign it next week.
And that's, um, got nothing to do with the public hearing or anything that's done by us, so that's easy, that's an easy fix.
Well, we talked about that. We talked about it with Horton Finance and they went along with us verbally, so.
Okay. The, the other one that, um, Peter had brought up before was the fact that firefighters can work more than forty hours before they go to overtime. I think we're covered there, but correct me if I'm wrong. Overtime. Employees that are not exempt from the Fair Labor Standards Act shall receive overtime pay after forty hours. I would think the Fair Labor Standards Act is the one that says that firefighters could work.
Right.
So I think we're already covered. We don't have to worry about fixing that one. Okay? All right. Is that it, bud?
Yes.
All right. That'd be an easy fix.
Yeah, and I want to thank the committee, uh, for all their hard work on it. At times, it was just shy of agonizing, but we got through it. Uh, everybody saw the points, saw everyone's points that were brought in. And I think we all learned a tremendous amount by going through the process of putting that ordinance together. And I think it's gonna be a good working document.
It's been a long road. Appreciate you guys sticking out. It's been, what, four or five years now that you've been working on this? So, really appreciate all the work. Supplemental tax?
We have just one supplemental tax, which was caused by, um, a taxpayer sold off a piece of land or a portion of a piece of land after the April first date and, um, we inadvertently billed them for the whole thing. So we've done an abatement on one side, but now we need to supplement, um, this gentleman so that he'll pay for his portion. So all the documentation is there.
Can we just make a motion and sign something?
Yeah, you can say the name of the abate lot, but it's, it's a fairly small amount.
Okay. Assessor's certificate of supplemental assessment. We hereby certify that the pages herein, numbered from one to one inclusive, contain a list, evaluation of estates, real and personal, liable to taxation in the municipality of Acton for the state and county, district, and municipal taxes for the fiscal year AD two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, as existed on the first day of April of said year. It witnessed thereof, we have hereun set our hands at, at Acton this twenty-second day of October two thousand fifteen. A motion to sign?
I move that we sign.
Seconded. All in favor?
Um, we have, I think, four or five quick abatements and, and we don't actually have to go through them. I'm just gonna tell you the property owner and why the valuation was changed.
Okay.
And then you can make motions altogether. So the first one is James and Evelyn Pike. The valuation was adjusted to reflect that there's no building on the property as of April first. The building value was twelve hundred. It brought it down to zero, so that one's minimal. The next one is Stephen and Everline Cookson. They bought an additional piece of property that turns out is not buildable at all. It was taxed at forty thousand one seventy-five. New land value is eighty-five fifty. There's no road furniture on that lot. Dolores Ingalls, um, she is, land value was adjusted to reflect the fact that the parcel was four point six and not five point six, or her land value dropped from fifty-six thousand five hundred to fifty-four thousand. David Hamilton and Tammy Sargent, uh, some of you might remember from our fire victims on San Morton, Winter Lane, right? Um, the, there was discussion about how much of the building was actually left after the fire and the assessor, after taking a look at it, um, decided to remove the entire building. The house was a loss. There was a garage that might have been, um, but he's removed the entire building value for that.
Remember, we went down and looked at that one with Peter?
Oh, yeah.
That trailer down on, yeah.
And the last one is for Danny and Kathleen Lapine. The, um, this follows up with the supplement. These are the people that bought only a portion of land from the abutment and shouldn't have been taxed on the whole thing, so their land value went from thirty-eight thousand to twenty-five hundred. The difference is being picked up in that supplement.
Motion to sign all of the abatements?
I move that we accept all the abatements.
Seconded. All in favor?
While you're signing those, before we move on, I got a couple of things I forgot under Old Business. We'll start with Bill. Um, did you, did you, did you have a chance to write the letter for the dam?
We talked about this a little while ago.
We did?
I, I think I-
We talked about it?
Maybe, maybe, maybe a little informally.
Or not?
It's, it's, I know that the letter's gotta be written, but it's not clear to me what is in the letter.
Okay. Um, I, I, what I heard last week, and Ted, Ed, feel free to jump in here, is that you just wanted to put a little pressure, if you will, on Sanford as far as moving forward with, I mean, we know that they're putting an RFP out to have the dam looked at, correct? But because of the extensive amount of calls that Acton is getting, I mean, we're trying to what, Ted? Encourage them to move this process along?
Yeah, we, we're just, the people are asking us to get involved, so we want to get involved by telling the town of Sanford that, that people are very out and happy that they're keeping their ski lake up, if that's part of the problem, and, and lowering our lakes.
Is that what you're saying?
Oh, yeah. And, and it's, it's part of it. They, they drained it and then they filled it back up again. So that water went in there instead of coming down into Acton. But the other thing is, is, um, you know, they said they're gonna start working on it and they're not. So we just want to encourage them to start working on it too, so. And, you know, as soon as they get the, uh, RF, it's not RFP, it's an RF.
Same thing, Q.
Um, as soon as they get that, we'd like to know, because we're gonna have to figure out, you know, what our share is because we, we joined that group, so we're gonna have to help- to help pay for that, so, we're gonna need to know that pretty soon.
Do you want, maybe tomorrow or next week? I'll just jot down some ideas, and we can just type it up together real quick. Sound good?
Excellent.
The other thing I wanted to mention, I got a call from Barbara, Seeker, who could not be here tonight, but she did ask me to take a couple of minutes to put a plea out there for this Saturday. As many of you know, she has her Mary Grant Preserve pumpkin carving going on this Saturday on San Page Road. It starts at 4 o'clock. Lot of things going on, this committee has put a lot of work into this event. First of all, I, and I did not know this, the pumpkins are actually being donated, so, you bring your family, bring your kids down, you don't even have to pay for the pumpkin, they're gonna provide the pumpkin for you. They're also providing drinks and fish chowder, homemade fish chowder, if anybody, there's gonna be a fire going on with marshmallows being roasted, a lot of activities going on, she's really trying to get the community together. She thinks it's a great place for, you know, not just the kids, because certainly we'll have a good amount of those that generally attend, but the older people, just to kind of sit around the fire, relax, and get to know your neighbor, and enjoy some yummies, and chat. She's hoping that she'll also see all three of the selectmen there to paint their pumpkins, we can judge them next week. So, Barbara, we have put it out there, hopefully this was good, and I didn't mess it up. October 24th, 4 o'clock, San Page Road, everybody be at the Mary Grant Preserve.
Before we go on from the abatements, Peter, the house down on Milton Mills Road, I noticed, David was there to do the excavation and everything, and I noticed they're starting to build that again. Have they, have we reached out to them as far as if there's anything we can do?
Yeah, they're, yeah.
Yeah, they're on, okay? Okay, that's great. It's good to see they're starting to rebuild it now. Okay. Planning board, new business?
Yes, we received a planning board resignation. Do you want to read that?
Dear Board of Selectmen, this is my letter of resignation from the Acting Planning Board. I am not able to properly serve on the planning board due to time conflicts, most notably during the harvest season at the orchard. It is now October 20th, and I have not been able to attend a meeting since August. This is not acceptable either to the town or the other members of the planning board. I therefore resign. I have been glad to serve the community in this capacity, and have no issues with the town, the planning board, or any individuals on the planning board. It is simply an issue of time conflicts. Sincerely, Arthur Kelly.
Motion? Make a motion, we accept it with regret.
I'll second.
All in favor? To thank Art for many years of service on the planning board, and you will be missed.
May I have that?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. And I will, next week, present to you who the alternate is that should be moved forward, because you'll have to create an oath for the alternate to move up.
Okay.
Take that regular seat.
And then we still have to appoint an alternator, or we...
We'll be open an alternate then, yeah, so we'll have to advertise for that.
Okay. And who's the alternate, do you know?
I'd rather not say, just until I can check the dates, because I want to make sure I have the right one.
Yeah, make sure you get the right one, okay. All right, a motion to go into execu...
I'm sorry. We have about six minutes, and you know how we are with postings, do you want to just go over the announcements, and maybe that'll kill a few more minutes, since it's only 5:54?
Sure.
We posted it for six, so, we like to be...